All right, let's get this meeting started. This work session of the county commission, apologize, we budget finance ran just a little bit over, but we had some great discussion in there that needed to happen. Everyone get their agenda, anybody not get their agenda? We have two budget amendments that will have to be added to this agenda that was sent out. We'll go over those when we get to budget amendments that were approved tonight through budget finance. When we open up the court, we're gonna have Ms. Grace Thomas do the invocation. Is she here tonight? Don't know whether she's okay with that. Pledge the American flag, Mr. Richard Johnson. You good with that? Do the roll call. We'll go into the approval of the minutes, of course. Several announcements. Mr. Oliver has one on historical society, is that about the book?
I would assume so.
I would assume it is, your honor. I would assume it is.
Is that what that was about?
I believe it is, you didn't specifically say.
He's got the historical society, there's two new books coming out in time for Christmas, I'm sure he just wanted to make everybody aware of that, because you can buy them cheaper if you buy them early on, but that's probably what that announcement, what is, if it's not, I'll make that announcement. Pretty sure it is. We may have a few others. Amendments, agenda, citizen response, school report, Dr. Satterfield is supposed to give us a report. It is supposed to be a written report. I'm going to the school board work session tomorrow night to make sure they're aware of their policy and his TCA enabling legislation that says that he will do this report, and that it's not something that we're asking for, it's something that's part of his responsibility, it's his job that he should do. So, I hope he has a written report for us, I expected it for tonight's meeting, but I haven't seen it yet, but I'll get that clear tomorrow night.
Well, I'm still in the lobby, it's supposed to be a little bit.
Well, either way, but it is.
Either way, the public gets involved.
But it specifically says a written report. Mayor Chambers, do you have anything you want to share with us at this time?
Well, first, if I could, I submit someone for amendment to the agenda, it's a lease from Mid-Cumberland Community Action Agency, it did go in front of the county buildings, it did not come with a recommendation, so... But on that one, this Mid-Cumberland Community Action Agency, they were doing the Head Start Program along with the Low Energy Home, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program and other rethorization program. They've lost the grant to do the Head Start, so they have to move out to a different facility. They contacted me, asked if you had anything. I brought them down here and showed them the former clerk and master's office, they said they only need a space two days a week, so eight days a month. I went in front of the committee, I had offered them a lease, a rent for fifty dollars a month, because that's what we're charging Mid-Cumberland Human Resources Agency. County came, there was a motion to amend it to a hundred dollars, that didn't pass, and like I said, this did not pass with the recommendation. However, I have spoken to Mid-Cumberland, and they were willing to come up to a hundred dollars a month on the rent. The rest of, there were some concerns about having to do work on the room, there is a clause in here that says they accept a room in its current condition, and that if they do any renovations, other than windows, HVAC, or anything like that, that they have to get our pre, our written permission beforehand, and then after that, if it's permanently attached to the building, it becomes county property, once they move out. They have a lease for one year, though, they do expect to, they are gonna, matter of fact, they should have already applied to get the Head Start grant back. They feel real good about it, the reason they lost it was not the running of the program, it was some administrative issues they had in the organization, they think those have been resolved, so they feel real good about getting the grant back, and I've heard positive feedback on their chances of getting the grant back, and if they do, then they'll be moving out here sometime between July and August of next year, so it'll be less than a year. They just need somewhere right now to meet residents of the county that need assistance on their utility bills, or other programs that are offered through Mid-Cumberland, and this is really the best place I thought we had, that the county had control of, so I would like to bring that to the county commission, get your approval to enter into that lease, because it's required by state statute. Is there any questions on that?
We have no question on that. So currently, they pay fifty dollars now over at the low income.
No, this is two separate organizations, there's Mid-Cumberland Human Resources Agency and Mid-Cumberland Community Action Agency. They used to be one organization, but the action agencies split off. Mid-Cumberland does, for the part of the old health building they have, they do have an agreement with the county that they pay fifty dollars a month.
But then, now this one, they're one percent.
Well, the facility this one's currently in, under the Head Start Program and everything, I think it was nine seventy a month, plus utilities, at the project, up in the Housing Authority Building on Project Drive. However, this is not affiliated with that Head Start Program, when they lost the Head Start, they lost about eight to ten million dollars in funding. So this, actually, each program is funded separately, so now they're gonna use their funds from their, what's called low energy, home, low income, home energy assistance program, and their rethorization program, and they are required by the federal government, they can't spend no more than eight to ten percent of the funds they receive on their administrative costs, which leasing rent does kind of come into that amount. So, that, I figured, a lower cost, they are here to help low income residents of the community, hopefully need to help provide a place for that, and that's really the best place we have as far as county buildings are concerned, and it does try to get a little bit more foot traffic here in the courthouse.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out why one, you know, was fifty and one will be a hundred, that's odd then. I mean, because they're both charity turned up.
Commissioner Russell?
Um, so, I know that they've lost their grant, I know that they no longer do the Head Start, and there's another company that actually does it now, that Head Start Program has a whole new company that uses them now, so how did they get back into getting the grant?
The federal government puts out grants every year to do that program, this group that took it over is just a transitional group, they have no intention of doing it on a permanent basis. It's basically an organization that's brought in to take over these programs, to manage it for a short term, until it's bid back out again the next year. So, when they bid about again, I think that they're supposed to award it in July, actually, they had to have their grant in by November 12th, so they've already sent it, submitted their grant application, it's supposed to be announced in July, then after that, they'll pick up with a new group, hopefully Mid-Cumberland will take it back over at that point in time. But the group that has it right now, they are just transitionary, they have never managed the program permanently, they're only there for transition purposes. If it's all right with the committee, I'll just move on to the mayor's report after that. Landfill, we'll move into that, that's currently expected to be completed sometime next week, weather permitting. I know it seemed like awful fast, but once we went up there and actually looked at the site, all the contractors looked at it, said it was really not that big a project, it was mainly just moving dirt around, they said you didn't really have to do a whole lot of work besides that, so they thought it'd go fairly quickly when they first talked about it, it was about five weeks, the weather's settling back a little bit, but right now, it's apparently be expected to be completed sometime at the end of next week.
Have they give you any idea of the cost, is it gonna be where you thought it was, or less, or what?
Right now, I'm just going with the contract amount, four hundred and thirty-two thousand and some change, so that's, that's what I'm figuring that the cost is gonna be.
That was their?
That was their bid, and they've told me that they don't see, once they got into it, and the issue of where the soil's gonna come from, and they found the source, they told me, at that point, they do not see that whatever's gonna be billed to the county going over their bid amount.
So that means we have to pay half of it?
Yes, sir, we'll have to pay, actually, it's a reimbursement, so we have to spend all of it, and then get it back to the state. We have been submitting that, and I think that was shown on the form of eight thousand and something we received thus far, because until we expand it, we can't submit for reimbursement on it.
The point is, we only get half back on what it costs, right?
Yes, sir, we'll get half back on what it costs, up to three hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, but that was based on an estimate of six hundred and forty-four thousand, so this should be dramatically less than that.
Good, that's good news.
Yep. And the Streetscape Project, I think I brought this up last month, that, the official beginning date of that was November 1st, and I haven't seen any movement out here yet, and that's something I'm gonna follow up with them on. There was some issues on paperwork, with T-dots on documentation, we had sent them before, and then they asked us for it again, so we've sent that in to them. But like I said, that started November 1st, and that, currently, the completion date is set for April 5th, because contractor had a hundred and fifty days, not barring weather incidents and whatnot, to get the project completed. The fire truck, as it was brought up in the Budget Finance Committee, you see the expenditures for the fire department are way ahead of where they were last year for budgeted, that's because the fire truck has been delivered and accepted, that was two hundred and eighty-something plus dollars, a thousand dollars. So, it has been delivered and accepted, so we do now have that new fire truck in our As it was alluded to at Budget Finance, we did have a meeting for the park master plan, presented two concepts, the consultant, both of those concepts are up in the lobby of the administration building, ones on either end, if you know that kind of bit or table, that's in the lobby area, in front of, in between where Rita Crowder's office is and the water department. The concepts are on either end of that, and there are comment sheets on that table as well, you can pick it out, look at the two concepts, neither one of them are written on at this point, it was just based on what the feedback was from the community, they got from the online survey about what they wanted, and so they presented two different concepts, one of them is kind of altering or improving things as the park is currently configured, and the second one was kind of from the standpoint that if it was vacant land, what would you build based on what's most efficient. So neither one of those are currently locked in, but currently getting feedback from the public, and that feedback will be included to come up with the final plan that will be submitted, I think at this point, they're looking to have it submitted to the committee about January, and hopefully it'll be voted on in February.
We got a grant for that, didn't we, Larry?
Yes, sir, we got a grant, it's a twenty thousand dollar grant, and we decided to use it before we're doing an improvement plan, because if you want to use grant money to improve the park, which it does need some improvement, a lot of things that people will tell me, there are grant funds out there from various state and federal agencies, but you have to have the plan in place to go after the grant money, so hopefully this facilitate, not only is government grants, but there are private grants out there, Blue Cross Blue Shield has one, and there's another private organization that has funds as well. But again, you have to have that plan to show them what you want to use their money for.
I think that that's definitely a missing piece when it comes to, like, the people in the community seeing that we're trying to do something with the park, they're missing the fact that we had a grant to be able to do it, because it's automatically like, oh, I think the money should go to this, or the money, or we should put money towards that. Maybe somehow show that, hey, this was purposed, you know, for this reason, with this money that we got. I think it would help the community, because I think they're blind to that.
Okay. The fire truck thing, have you paid it off?
Yes, sir, I've already written a check for that, and so that's why the budget finance shows such a high expenditure rate at this point, because that check has already been sent out, and they've paid for it at this point. Those are the major projects we've got coming along the pipeline, there are some other things that we're working on, but at this stage, there are really not any points to bring them to the committee and let you know about, because they're in the very, very early beginning stages.
Just to add to kind of what Ms. Russell said there, I have heard some people in the public kind of ask about the park, they're like, wait a minute, so what's gonna be available at the park next year? This is a plan at this point, a phased idea, just to communicate that piece a little bit more, as commissioners, I think we need to put that out there, this is a plan, make sure we understand, this is a phased-in plan, when we're trying to make, come up with those pieces, is what they, I know they had like fifty-seven people, I think, sign up here last week, when they were down, killing on?
Yeah, it was, I know they had some more come in after I talked to them, but I think it was thirty, thirty-two or so, and then they had over five hundred respond to the online survey, which they said was some of the highest responses they've received, and they thought it was kind of odd that they received some of their highest responses in the smallest county they've ever dealt with, but they did, well, they were really impressed with the feedback on that, and so they thought they got a lot of really good feedback going in the plan, but as you said, their final report that they're gonna submit has a proposed phase-in period for then these improvements, and I believe it's over ten years, and it's done in at least three phases, so it's not gonna be all done at once, it's gonna have to be done in phases, and they also, in their plan, I think they mentioned they would also recommend grant funds that would be available to do these certain projects as you go forward, so. It's not gonna be all done at one time, it is gonna be phased in, but it's all gonna be greatly based on the feedback the public gave them, and I made sure when we started the process, that it is based on what the public wants, not what people think it is I want, it's not for me, it's for the public, so we really have tried to go out of our way to let the public know, give your feedback on this, because that's what determines what this plan is gonna be.
Any other questions from the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go into committee reports. Like I did last month, I don't want to go down the laundry list of all the committees, and you have to respond, no meeting, no meeting, no meeting, I think that sends a signal, a flammable signal to the public that we're not doing our jobs, we're not meeting, and so I'm one of, the ones that we know have met will be the ones that I will ask for and report for, and that's the reason. I'm showing that budget finance met tonight, county buildings met on November 7th, economic development met on November 14th, executive committee met on November 5th, law enforcement met on November 7th, parks and rec on November 12th. That's all the ones I have, did I miss any? Ms. Walsh?
I don't have an answer to that question, I got another question.
Did we miss any of the committee meetings? Is that good? Yes, sir.
At the end, can you ask for any scheduled meetings for next month, just in case somebody didn't have a meeting and you skip them, but they have a meeting planned for next month already?
Yes. If you will let us know if you have a date, and I put that date on here, and we can just make the announcement when we come to that committee that it's scheduled to meet on such and such date. Let myself or the name know. Thank you. Moving to active business, we have beer board appointments, I think we only have one on the beer board, is that correct, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Rhonda Kiesling, and this is a reapport, reappointment. Our ethics board, we, all five of these are reappointments, all these people have been contacted and expressed their desire to stay on these respective boards or committees. And on the industrial development board, Scott Graves, and have you got a second yet?
I contacted Citizens Bank, and they told me they would give me a name by the end of this week.
One thing I noted on the, on that board, of that committee, if I can find it. On the economic development committee, we had Lisa Bill on that, she has indicated she doesn't want to serve on that anymore, so when we get to that list, we'll strike her name on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think the ad committee should be added on this, we discussed that, but it's not on this agenda. I wonder about that, I don't know.
I'll go back and look at it, and if it's supposed to be included, it'll be added to it, but the ad committee is all reappointments from the current, because they kind of picked their own membership, and I think it was added, and Ms. Thomas has more to add to it.
In speaking with Ms. Terry, she said that that's normally appointed in January, so it was taken off this agenda, and it was up to the chair if he wants to add it.
That's what I remember, and we took it off, because they usually do that in January, so we're just gonna move it to the January.
I don't know why it wasn't on there.
But that's one, that's one, they asked for it to be done in January. Okay. Resolutions, let's move into them. Committee assignments, we have a resolution here for the committees, which we do every year. We did a little bit, I did a little bit, we did a little bit of restructuring to the committees, tried to group them under three main headings, budget finance and purchasing, county operations, and public works, to have a better understanding of the roles of those individual committees, and it will help later on if we seek it to try to combine some, or we have subcommittee structure, that's why that's done. Two or three things changed, we had talked about, discussed, possibly putting purchasing oversight into the budget committee, but the way the charter specifically spells it out as a standalone committee with five members, we felt like it would be better to go ahead and leave it as a standing committee.
That's a core of the community, right?
County operations, changed the name of the executive committee to the steering I felt like the executive committee gave a connotation of a hierarchy, in that if you weren't serving on it, you were a second-class commissioner, and it didn't really reflect the duties of it. Its main duty is steering. If somebody has something that needs to be brought to the commission, which committee structure does it go through? They steer the legislation in the right direction, so I changed the name of the executive committee to the steering committee. Any comments on that? Most of the others stayed the same, I did split where we had joined codes and zoning enforcement and county buildings together, I split them back out separately, because they're dealing with two separate issues, you know, it's two separate parts, and on the surveys that you responded, believe it or not, that committee was the one that most people wanted to be on. So by splitting it, it let me put everybody on one part of that committee or the other. Now, I put you on the part that I thought you were most suited for, with your knowledge base and background, and have shown interest in it, so that could be subject to change, but I split those back out. Other than that, I don't think we had any other changes. Personnel, we're calling it employee and personnel, there again, if we want to do some subcommittees under it at a later date, it would be a bit easier to do. The surveys that you responded to, everybody, as much as I could possibly do, are on the committees that you asked to serve on. I'll say that one more time. Everyone is on the committees that you indicated that you wanted to serve on. There's a few exceptions, a very few exceptions, because we just had way too many people, or you had put down way too many committees that you had interest in. So, look it over, if there's something that you, I absolutely do not want to be on this, we don't want you on it, because if you don't want to be on it, you're not gonna show up at meetings anyway, and that just, that just hurts getting the forum together. If you've got something that you want to be on, you got interest in it, of course we'd want you to be on that committee, if you have an interest in it. Now, I will caution, a lot of you, there's a possibility of perceived conflict of interest because of some of the committees in your job, particularly with the county, or you're in oversight on some of the things that you're involved in, you need to be very careful with that, and you need to be very careful when it comes to time to vote, particularly on budgetary matters. So we get used to that, I just want to caution you on that. If there is something that you see that you want changed or different, just see me after the meeting, and we'll try to see if we can accommodate that. I have one or two, I expect us to have one or two minor changes between now and next Monday night, and we'll give everybody a fresh copy, because this is pretty much your first opportunity to look at and think about it, talk about. Is everybody okay with that? Do you understand the what and the why? I really think going forward, we may be able to go to a committee and subcommittee, and some of these quarterly things be subcommittees under a main committee or something of that nature. I just didn't want to make too many changes right off the bat. Well, let's get used to this and see how this goes, it's worked well, it's served us well, not trying to throw the baby out of the bathwater. Before we get into ordinances while we're talking about the survey, I put, you have a copy in your packet of the survey results, not who said what, but what was said, what was indicated, because I think it would be, I think everybody probably was interested in that, it should be two pages, this survey result, one page by itself, not a paper solution in the packet. Off the back. If you hadn't had a chance to look at it, just scroll over a little bit, I think we have time to. Do you feel the committees are useful and function well for the stated needs? Eight responded yes, most, all of the comments were, were yes, some depending on, this depends on what was, but overall, I think we felt the consensus of the regiment was that we feel the committees are useful and function well. Do you feel that you've had the opportunity to serve well in your past committee assignments? Most, about half said yes, or for the most part, or I do, some said no, some said that they felt that they were unproductive. But overall, I think most people feel that the committees are useful, and they're happy with their assignments. I will say, I was really surprised that when you indicated the committees that you wanted to be on, the vast majority of you put down the committees that you're already on, which that was kind of a surprise, I figured some of you would be wanting to change drastically. Talk about how, do we have two meetings, not enough, about right, about half said that it was about right, three people felt like there was too many, some, there were, you know, said could be combined as subcommittees. Which ones could be combined, budget purchasing, purchasing oversight and finance? Purchasing oversight could be handled as a subcommittee budget finance, so that's something we may look at doing if we want into the future, if we feel like the charter will allow us to do that. Typically, how often should committees meet? Most of them monthly, or this depends on the committee, some quarterly. Typically, how much time should be allotted for a meeting? Overwhelmingly, it was not, or as needed. What frustrations have you had with serving on committee? Y'all can read through that yourself. Do we need additional meetings faced for committees? Overwhelmingly, it was no, or probably not. I think the key to that is making sure that we don't schedule on top of another committee for this room. What would help you the most functioning well on a committee? Provide information, and the big, big common denominator here is agendas prior to the meeting. More information, agendas before the meeting, an outline of the meeting before the day, for people to understand their role and do their job. What do you feel would be helpful, develop a set of rules, to use the standard operating guides? Four said yes, emphatically said yes, I mean, big, bold letters, yes. A lot of people said we have the charter, and that we have Robert's rules and guides, or Robert's rule of order. Absolutely, Roberts doesn't cover everything, it would be tremendous in knowing how we do our jobs for new commissioners. I think I'm gonna go forward with trying to develop a set of rules. Robert's rules of order gives you the order, it tells you the order of a meeting, and how to conduct a meeting. It doesn't give you all the details of how you want to conduct your meeting. Most counties, most governments, House of Representatives, the Senate, state legislature, everybody operates with a set of rules. We'll put a committee together, and we'll work on it, it won't be just my ideas, it'll be our ideas, and it'll be something that's gonna take us a while to develop, and we'll get started on that first of the year. And you will have to vote on it, it's not something that I'm gonna come up with, and that's locked, it's gonna be up to y'all to pass it or not pass it, okay? Most important issues we'll be facing as a commission? I really expected people to expound more on that question, I was a little disappointed that we didn't. Service missions, county debt, growth in the county, what's best for the county, jail, firehouse, having all the facts, homeless, over spending, debt payoff, all the things that we've talked about, a lot of things that we talked about in the last meeting. that we've talked about, a lot of the things that we talked about in the last meeting. I think we know what's, what's ahead of us, and there's a lot ahead of us, it's just a matter of prioritizing it. And we can, I'm a firm believer that we're set in a position with personnel and finances to conquer anything that's going to come our way. Y'all are a great group of people, of broad base, and a lot of knowledge, and it's going to pay off coming into the challenges that we're going to have in the future. Greatest strengths and challenges? Balancing the budget, dealing with the commissioners, that's probably for me. We all love our county, tackling the challenges together, learning to compromise with each other, not spending ourselves into bankruptcy, stopping the overspending, getting rid of the good old boy network. All those things are the comments. I listed every comment that everybody put down, the way you put it down. If it's misspelled, it's because you misspelled it. If you think it should have a not in front of it, it didn't. So I'm just saying that's the result. Y'all look it over, and if you'd like to talk to me about it, I'd love to hear from you. I think it was a good exercise. It's kind of part of a visioning exercise, if you've ever been a part of one of those where you work, or some other organization, you basically are trying to identify your strengths, weaknesses, and your perceptions, so that you know who you are, where you are, so that you know where you're going to. And that was the purpose of it, and I'm sure we'll do something like this again next year, Lord willing, and y'all think it was a good idea. And I can see, I would like to challenge some of the committees to carry this sort of thing to your committees, particularly economic development, budget finance, some of those committees, law enforcement, as far as the things that you feel like you need to focus in on. Some of the discussion we were talking about last meeting with Wielteck and things, this would be a good way to bring those ideas to the forefront and to compile them. Any questions about that? Any comments? Was it worth after? So we have that one resolution at this time. Ordinances, the Charter Revision Commission ordinance. Mayor, are you through with all your selections for it on the charter review?
I have, just talked to two more people, the county commission members, as far as the citizens, I have all seven of the citizens.
So we're ready for this to go? Okay. All right, we'll move on into budget amendments. The first one in your packet was for EMS vehicle, budget finance, ask that be sent back, referred back to the emergency services committee. There were just too many questions about that still unresolved, need to get worked out before it comes before the whole body for funding. So that one was referred back to the emergency services committee. We have two more that were added last minute budget. One is VA 118 EMS, a refund of $5,109.25. This is to amend the ambulance services fund. Evidently Medicare paid two times, and they finally figured it out, and they want their money back. So that's refunded back to Medicare. It was approved by budget finance committee. The next one was fire department, VA 101, fire department, $22,520. This is for anticipated expense. We pay the firemen from December 1st through November 30th every year. That pay period is ending this month. We budgeted $34,000, and it's going to be closer to $56,520. So there's an additional $22,520 needed to be able to pay the firemen. There was much discussion about this on budget finance, but it was approved. And anybody have any questions about it, or talked about it? It's one of those things that, you know, it's just, there was a lot of reasoning, and I think Chief, there's a letter here from Chief Beeler that explains why it came up a little short, and a lot of it is because they're doing more training than we've insisted on them doing, or we've asked them to do. So they're doing a great job, and we're going to look at it in committee to see about paying them quarterly or even monthly, so that we don't get hit with this at the end of the year like this, going into the year.
Can you change if you don't put it on the budget? Still can cause you some trouble.
Same amount of money, but it wouldn't be such a big hit at one time.
You're not making a budget amendment to pay it.
Probably still be doing one at the end of the year.
Yep.
Okay. That's what we have on ordinances. Now, the contract, will that be, where will we put that? Where will we need to put that? Just under your mayor's report?
That's something I'll ask Mr. Beller about. Does that have to be in the form of a resolution, or just a vote authorizing me to sign the contract?
Need that vote authorize you to execute, that's what will need to happen, but let's take the body into approval.
But it'd be a resolution?
It can't be in the form of a resolution, yes. Would be the other document that you need.
So we just put it under the resolutions section, it'd be 12B, you'd add his item
That's where I include it. Have one notary take the table with the highway department, and we don't know of any others that have come in, there may be some more, but right now, that's all we have.
Do you skip that ordinance to what? Stand as a charter revision commission?
I asked the mayor if he had it ready to present, he said he did.
Oh, yeah, it'll be ready.
Okay. One or two other quick things. Typically, we do not meet in December. Typically, we do not meet in December. If there's something of great importance comes up, we may need to, I don't anticipate anything. Does anyone know of anything right now? Once we approve this committee structure at the meeting next Monday night, the people that were asterisked, or either the current committee chairs, or the old committee chairs file the committee for a reorganizational meeting to elect your new chairman, secretary, and vice chairman. Okay? So you can go ahead and do that in December if you want to, but probably it would be better to wait until the first part of January, but go ahead and be scheduled notes, because it's going to be a whole lot of them at one time. Try to keep that in mind, be as flexible as you can. If you think your committee can meet at five as easy as it can meet at seven, then maybe try to meet at five instead of seven, if that makes sense. Let's see.
We meet in December, it's cost the county a lot more money.
Do what?
I said it, it's cost the county a lot more money. And they won't really do any good.
I really don't understand what you're saying.
I'm saying if we meet in December to elect our chairmans and things, and we're not going to really do any good, it's cost the county a bunch of money.
Well, it does always cost when a committee meets, but one of the things the committee needs to do is select their new officers for the year.
You can do that in January.
That's what I said. December, January, it's the same, and it's coming out of the same budget dollars, just so that there's not so many in one month at one time, is all I said, if somebody wants to meet in December. Once this is approved, there's no reason that you can't. But that'd be up to that chairman, whoever the existing chairman now he is, to go ahead and call that side of the meeting, is what I was trying to say. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you're saying. Mr. Clark?
Call the county building committee, you didn't put anybody down there that can call Peter Dorr.
Okay, I said the existing chairman, which is me. I am not staying on that committee, but I will call that committee. Mr. Walsh?
Making motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.